I'll call the meeting of the special session of the city council from Buchanan to order. It's five o'clock. If you would follow me in a moment of silence and meditation and then to the pledge of allegiance. Thank you. All right.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you mind if I cut my phone off? Please, if everybody will cut their phones off, I'd be much obliged. Or put them on vibrate or silence, whatever. I want to welcome everybody to the council. Thank you for being here today. It's a special session where you have an agenda before us. Mr. Doss, as we've had this special session before, Mr. Doss facilitated it very well. So I will release the floor to him so he can lead us through to part B, which is our items for discussion. Mr. Doss, would you like to begin us off?
Thank you, Mayor. What I'd like to do is, on your agenda, I have under B1 fire police fees. It's all right with council. I'd like to move B1 down to B4 and then just move everything up. So 2 would be 1 and so forth. So we're talking about B2 on council.
Excuse me?
Yeah.
Would you read out the title for B2, Building and Code Enforcement?
Yeah, I was getting ready to. B2 is Build and Code Enforcement Officer position. They did email council members just a draft of a description, if you will, of creating a position. A lot of those duties are what Rich Clemmons does at this point. He is the code enforcement officer. He is the zoning official. And what I wanted to do was incorporate a new aspect to that position, and that would be a building inspector. So what you have in front of you, what you had a few weeks ago in your email, was just a description of that. And Dave, I'll get you a copy of that before we leave today, so you can take that with you, Dave Thomas. But what this would do is this would establish and build on an existing position, would create a position which would be called a Building and Code Enforcement Officer. Again, when we're talking about code enforcement, we're talking about enforcing the codes of the city of Buchanan, things like property maintenance and cleanup. This is certainly one of the large aspects of code enforcement. Zoning and working with the zoning board and in making determinations as far as zoning restrictions would also be included in this position. Again, these are positions that Mr. Clemmons holds at this time. But the building inspector would be something new. And you can see throughout the proposed description what that would entail. One of the discussions that we had when we were doing several years ago, when we implemented the Contractors BNO, some of the opposition that we had to the Contractors BNO was not just the tax itself, but the fact that what were we getting for implementing it being a tax on contractors. And one of the suggestions, I think, which was made by Jay Harper at the time with Harper Lumber, was for us to look at establishing a position of a building inspector. Jay believed, in talking to some other folks who are in the contracting business, that having a building inspector that was certified and licensed, that worked for the city of Buchanan, would not only be a benefit to legitimate contractors performing legitimate work, but would be an extreme, extreme good service that the city could offer the citizens of Buchanan to assure that there's compliance with codes when they go to build a structure, they go to add in addition to their home, or have contracting work done to their home. So this is something that we were kind of turned on to a few years ago. And in the absence of, or the vacancy that Mr. Clemmons is doing with his position, gives us an opportunity to not only revisit the position that he's doing, but also gives us an opportunity to add this other facet to that position. So I think everybody should have had a copy of that and take a look at it. No decision, but I would like maybe some feedback and some input. One of the major things is, as we establish this position, if we go to establish this position, I do not foresee this position being a full-time position. I see this position probably averaging 20 to 25 hours a week. Therefore, this position would not be benefits eligible. This position would not provide the individual who had this position the opportunity to have health insurance, retirement with the city of Buchanan. But we would want to have some compensation for this individual that would make them worth their while. This individual's going to come with a lot of certifications. We're going to acquire a lot from this individual. This individual needs to be, quite honestly, someone who is very stern in our regulations and our code and has the ability to strongly enforce those codes. And when I say strongly enforce, you know, I sometimes mean having to get, quite honestly, nasty with some individuals. When you're talking about code enforcement, you're talking about building inspections. But again, establishing this position, I feel, would be a great service to the citizens of Buchanan. I, again, don't view this as a position that would be a full-time position, certainly not a benefits-eligible position. By doing that, though, we also have to understand that we're probably going to attract an individual that's either retired or semi-retired, or maybe just wants to do this off on the side. You know, I'm looking, quite honestly, just throwing some numbers out, at a position that would be $20,000 to $30,000. I know that seems like a lot. Just one moment. Seems like a lot, but it's something that we could talk about. And at budget time, you know, we can see with our budget and our 2015, '16 budget, we can certainly, if we want to do this position, incorporate that within our budget. And in the meantime, go and advertise for that position, do interviews for that position, hire that person in that position. And again, as we're entering the last quarter of this fiscal year, depending on where we're at financially, it would really be a good opportunity for that person, whoever that person may be, to come in and work with Mr. Clemmons in the last three months of his tenure, learning some of the things and getting familiar with the things and some of the projects that are ongoing or getting ready to start as they relate to code enforcement and zoning, looking at his files and so forth.
A question about the code. We don't currently have anything in the city about building codes except as conformed with the state building codes or anything.
Correct.
But electrical codes, we have a higher standard than what the state has, right? Are we going to adopt any Boca codes or are we going, anything at all that goes with the city of Buchanan?
Well, see, that's interesting, Ron, that you bring this up, because part of this position that I see is, this person would be someone who would make recommendations to policy for you. I mean, we would have a building inspector, certified individual coming in. And that's something, quite honestly, we haven't had in the city. So I would envision that person actually being a resource for us and saying, hey, we need to adopt this code and having this. So we can strengthen the codes that we have and build on codes that we don't have, you know. And so, and that's part of that job description, is having an individual that can consult with us and say, hey, we need to strengthen this, or hey, we don't have a true building code. Here's what I'm looking at, and can come back and bring recommendations to council. Again, strengthening what we do in the city as far as code enforcement and what we do as far as building inspections are concerned.
Mayor? Thank you. First of all, the electrical codes, I wanted to say, if there is a time lap between the two parties, Rich and the new individual, that would be a great opportunity to review some of the codes that maybe, of course, I'm sure they would anyhow, but anything that is way above, beyond, is, you know, then strike those down. To bring them down to a normal level is what I mean, instead of being way beyond. But I'll go back. Do you not understand what I'm saying?
I don't.
Okay. Then, I think you said that your, the city codes are far above and beyond than the state requirements?
Yeah, a little more stringent requirements on the electric.
The electric.
And why are we?
It's just the way that council and the code and the specifications that you all, as a council, not you currently, have adopted.
Oh, okay.
I would envision that the individual, I mean, would not do electrical inspections at this time unless, I don't know who we're going to get, to be honest with you. We may have that position to where we may not need to do that.
We have a good electrical inspector.
We have a pretty decent electrical inspector.
Okay. So let me go with my other questions, then, because I had them here. The job description I looked over and read over and compared to others, okay? The couple of things, I didn't see, who will this person be reporting to? Is he going to be, who, where is he going to fall in the realm?
He would report to the mayor or the city administrator.
Okay.
And all the council.
All right. And then it says that the person will be attending city council meetings, planning commission meetings, and zoning board appeals meetings. Those understood. But is he there at the, I'm asking as the planning commission, because that's the most recent one that I have served on. Will this individual be there as an advisor or liaison capacity for the planning commission? Because, you know, Rich has been taking charge of the meetings and running them and that kind of thing.
There's already existing code in ordinances, I shouldn't say code, in city ordinances, which outlay that position and some of the responsibilities of that position. So by creating this position and kind of consuming that within that, all of those other job responsibilities and those duties would fall on this person in that position. So this person in that position would do what Rich Clemmons does in relation to the planning commission.
And I would might add, if you don't mind, before you go on. As part of a lot of the responsibilities that Michael also has within his job description fall within the planning area. So Michael would also be one of those players that would ultimately, because he is the one that will be always here, whereas we could always not be here.
Right, right.
So ultimately, he would be kind of like what a Rich was. But in your city, in the planning commission, it's within the commission to elect a president, and that person would actually ultimately be the leader of your commission.
We want to elect a president, a vice president, and a secretary within the planning commission. And we hope to have some training with people like yourself, Michael, and other people who have input to come in and talk to the.
Now, you can do that, Mayor. And here's the only other option within that ordinance, though. Ex officio officer according to ordinance is the city recorder. So you can have a secretary there that could actually delegate right now whatever, but as far as any official records that go onto.
Right, right. They're all city records.
It's through the city recorder. And I'm not even so sure that you could actually have any without a city recorder there.
We may not, right. No, we probably would not.
What I'd like to do, and again, I need to get this to Mr. Thomas, so he has an opportunity to take a look at it. What I had envisioned is hashing out this position, getting a number. You know, I guess one of the things with you tonight is to consider having a full-time, I mean, a part-time individual that is not benefits-eligible, you know, and think about what that pay would be. And then sometime in January, actually advertising for that position, spend February interviewing for that position, and maybe get that person on. That way, we're kind of getting into the back end of the last quarter of the year at the end of Rich's tenure.
Have you had any idea, do you have any ballpark figure to begin with?
I'm thinking 20 to 30.
That's what you said a while ago, 20 to 30, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, again, because this individual, the expectation for this individual, they're having, they're having a code enforcement position. So they're our code enforcement officer. They're our zoning officer, and they're our building inspector. And those three hats combined is a pretty tough job. And it's not, quite honestly, a very likable person. You know, code enforcement, I know that this council spoke about wanting to get stricter on code enforcement.
Now, you're talking, when you say code enforcement, you're talking about dilapidating houses.
That's a good chunk of it.
Okay.
A good chunk of it.
Of course, our ordinances.
Yeah. And with any enforcement, just like our officers, it's not a fun job. So, you know, I think compensation and the expectation of this person having to get licenses and certifications, especially from the building inspector end of it.
Right.
You know, compensation needs to be comparable, and, you know, certainly within our budget range that we can afford.
Especially for our part-time workers.
Absolutely.
I got three or four comments or observations.
Please, Mr. Thomas.
That's okay. First, I'd ask Jay for his observations, thoughts, because he's probably, of all of us in this room, other than Michael, even more than Michael probably, is the most qualified to comment on this. Am I wrong with that, Jay?
Yeah, I mean, we want to make sure that the current code, and I think that Mr. McCollough put that in our last rounds of qualifications that, or ordinances, that we, you know, adhere to the latest of what the states adopt, and that's IBC, International Building Code. You know, Boca's no longer used, but it's IBC. And I think we changed the language to include the latest edition. So whatever the states has adopted, you know, we at least have that, if not, you know. The additions normally come out every three years, and we can adopt what the states adopted or go to the latest edition, you know, which is the most current.
And I will, as a side note, Mr. Thomas, before you ask your next question, that is mentioned in the job description, that they would adhere to all West Virginia codes adopted as well as local municipal codes. Anything that you would like to do in addition to or above and beyond.
Would this person have strong interaction with Jay?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, when you have issues of floodplain, when you have issues of zoning, I know Mr. Clemmons works with Jay on certain things. They go hand in hand, so absolutely.
Utilities, you know, streams, all that.
Again, I think as referenced in the description.
My second comment is that I think just as a learning process, when you throw out the figure 20,000 or 30,000 dollars, we have to remember that if you have the benefit package, that is a very, very, we have a very liberal benefit package. I'm not saying it's too liberal, it's just liberal. And if you have somebody making 20,000 or 30,000 dollars, that would be full-time position, your benefits probably are 20,000 to 30,000 more added on that. So I think it's critical to recognize that you suggested part-time. Maybe outsourcing would be a possibility, too. I don't know if that, is that a difficult thing.
It's always a possibility, Dave. I'm not sure he, you know, would outsource to contract with someone to do that work. Is that what you're suggesting?
Well, that's possible.
Sometimes it's a benefit to actually have.
I mean, that's what we're doing with the electrical inspector now. She's not employed.
Sure, but if we have someone actually in our payroll, they're ours. You know, they're our individual, and they have allegiances to us, you know, as opposed to a contractor who may be dealing with, you know, someone who we're contracting with, who may have a vested interest in another contractor, you know, relative or something like that.
There's processes or procedures that could alleviate that. The third comment is, you talked a couple of years ago, Michael, I think your first year here, that we need to take a look at a model that is going to assess a fee for, I guess, vacant properties or unoccupied properties. That several cities or towns in the state have done that. And I think that is something that, in my opinion, would be part of this whole process, that, you know, if we're going to go out and hire somebody to do this work, there should be some revenue behind it that we currently don't have. Is that still something that you have in back of your mind?
Early on, you're correct. Early on, Mr. McCollough, Mr. Clemmons, and myself have worked on some, just internally in-house legislation that never made its way to council in dealing with some of our permit fees and some of our square footage and how we calculate that. And certainly, that's something else that would have to be taken into consideration, is going back and looking at our permits and going and looking at the way that we charge for new buildings or expansions of buildings or remodeling and taking a look at that. And of course, certainly, that would add additional revenues that would help support the funding of that position.
Are there other cities or towns that do a vacant property assessment? Is that done?
I think the one thing that we grabbed that from, I want to say the city of Wheeling is where we grabbed that legislation from. It was basically unoccupied buildings or structures. Not vacant lots doesn't really ring a bell with me, but vacant buildings that sat unoccupied for like a year would be assessed a certain fee, you know, based on that. And every month or every year after that, if that building was vacant, there would be a fee attached to the landlord for that. Because again, a vacant building has a tendency to deteriorate a lot quicker than an occupied building.
And the thought press behind that was that if there's a fee attached to it, it may provide an incentive for the individual owner that's often time, not even living in West Virginia, to do something with their problems.
Sure, sure. It deals a lot with absentee landlords, if that's what you're referring to. The other thing, again, is that we need to be cognizant of the fact that we have a pillar in our home rule application where this position will come into play with code enforcement. And that is actually going and getting more aggressive with building and code enforcement as far as nuisances and even to the extent of how we abate those nuisances. You know, we've talked about in our home rule application about the city had to go in and abate a nuisance, you know, and use taxpayers' dollars to correct a problem, you know, and how we would directly assess taxes with that. I would see this individual working, particularly with Jerry Arnold, our street department, you know, as far as the cleanup would be concerned and the enforcement aspect of it. So it's a prime opportunity with Mr. Clemmons leaving to, one, tap into Rich's mind, you know, and get this individual caught up on what's going on and where we're headed. But also, a good opportunity for this person to get their feet wet, as we do with our home rule, as far as nuisance abatement and tax assessment is concerned.
And my fourth comment is, whatever we do, we need to make sure that we're enforcing what we have.
I agree. That is the most important thing, and I will drive this home to council as we go through this process. This is not a glamorous position. This individual will be charged with building inspections and code enforcement, meaning this person is going to go out, and if you want them to be aggressive, if you want them to clean up properties, and I'm speaking candidly to you, you have to let this person do their job. And this person is going to cite your friend or the person you go to church with. And if we permit that person to do that job, we'll be able to clean up some of those properties in town. I know that firsthand in previous jobs I've had, that experience. But you got to let them do it. And it's going to be painful, and you're going to get the phone calls, and you're going to get this. And we'll talk about this throughout this process. We'll talk about it to the people we interview as well. But, you know, you got to respect the process and let it, and it will happen, and it will run its course, and it will be successful.
Well, thank you, Dave. Pam, did you have a question?
This person that we're hoping to get, is this somebody that's going to be already been trained in this type of thing, or is that something we're going to have to extend and overtrain?
No, no, no. We can't get, we can't do on-the-job training with this person. There's so many things in town that we need to address that we can't do on-the-job training with this individual. This individual needs to be certified. I mean, some of these certifications will take a long period of time for this person to have. And if this person doesn't have that, or is not in the process of receiving that, I mean, some of these certifications take what, Jay? Six months to a year?
Six months to a year.
So, you know, on-the-job training, with all due respect, this isn't an amateur position.
And is this someone that would be able to recognize where there's asbestos going on, or?
Well, you know, I don't know who we're going to get. I don't know who we're going to attract. If we get someone that has a certification in asbestos detection and remediation, great. You know, that just adds to it. I just don't know. It's like going fishing. You don't know what you're going to catch. So I'm not sure at this point. I don't have anyone in mind, to be honest with you. I don't know if the range we'll be asking is adequate enough. I just don't know. I mean, I know what we want to ask and what we want in that position, and we'll just send that and see if we get any response.
I'm just hoping that, you know, the person we do get, because Rich could go and, you know, as a zoning officer, he didn't have any, we didn't have, he didn't have anything to enforce it. And we have to be able to have this weekend force like they said.
Honestly, Pam, we may not have anything in our ordinance that really has enough teeth in it. And that's where this individual come in with their experience and say, hey, we need to look at ordinance 346. I don't know if that's even, you know, related to this. We need to look at ordinance 346 because this language here is unenforceable, and we need to sharpen that up. And that's where this person's expertise and their experience will come into play. And we don't know. We may have weak ordinances. I don't know. In other words, disrespect to Mr. McCollough, but we may need to sharpen some.
Whoever we do hire, that isn't, like you said, you're going to make your best friend mad at you or this and that. I just hope it's a fair process when we do hire somebody.
Now, keep in mind, once we actually adopt whatever the job requirements we're going to require of this person, Michael would get the applications, but it would still come through city council before any consideration to whom we would hire. So you would have every opportunity, every council member would have every opportunity to review those applications and determine whether or not it fits the criteria that you're looking for. Dennis, you got something you wanted to question?
Yes, Mayor, one quick question.
Sir?
Could this part-time individual be an active contractor?
I don't think it would be a conflict of interest, but in that case, it would be almost like our electrical contractor question. So.
It's better to have that individual, it's better to have that individual under us.
With the experience, yeah.
You know, and employed by the city. So it's our, it's our person.
Ron, did you have a question?
I did.
Sorry.
Two things. First of all, should we even state a salary of 20,000 to 30,000, or should we just leave that blank for now?
You can DOQ it, but we still need to know something, you know.
Well, we should know in our, not let anybody, we're interviewing or things, you know. Ask them. Maybe they'll work for $15,000, and they retired and got all the money they want. They just want to do something part-time. Who knows? The other thing is, the other thing is that can we add an impact fee on new construction that might help to cover some of this? I know that Berkeley County added an impact fee. They're the only county in the state that has one. But that was for infrastructure. And could we add anything like that in a city, an impact fee on new construction?
As a municipality, you have the autonomy to really add any fee you want. You know, the one fee that we have that we get a contractor, I'm going to self-pagate, is our contractor BNO. The thing with the contractor BNO is that council, this current council, the council had dedicated those funds to be used for street improvements and capital projects. You know, but I haven't looked at impact fees around, but, you know, we could do something like that.
That could be something that this individual would bring on board, too, if this is something that they would look at.
I think we need to look at our charges. And again, as Mr. Thomas alluded to a few years ago, it was discussed, but it never got out of the internal discussion.
One more thing is that as far as a building inspector goes, we've had, what, new construction in the city of Buchanan is for housing and everything. We haven't had more than half a dozen in the last eight, 10 years, probably, for new, actual new construction. So building inspectors for new construction for housing probably won't take up a lot of his time. If we get some more businesses in town, inspection for that, yeah, I can see that. But he's going to be more involved, I think, in code enforcement than anything else.
The buildings, we do have a lot of people that will add additions or new roofs, but put fences on. You got to look at footers, how they're poured correctly, some of that. It's not just about big houses being built.
Yeah, we would probably see more activity on the renovation and addition end, you know, because all the city lots are basically built upon it. You're looking at, you know, renovation and business.
Mr. Thomas, do you have something?
Yeah, I.
Yes, sir.
Better than throw out 20,000 or 30,000, I think it's something that we'll look at is that based per hour, what a person would, you know. I think one of the real critical elements is that they're a certified electrician, probably. I think that's going to be the most, I mean, Jay, am I wrong on that? Should that be one of the elements of?
Well, I mean, I think we have an electrical inspector on board, you know. Do you let that position go? And then, I mean, they are two different, you know, fields. And I mean, you can ask for that, but, you know, the price is going to go up if you want him to also be a certified electrical inspector, which is not an electrician. It's a completely different position, and you have to get a registration for that. I mean, are you going to make this position all-encompassing, you know, and it's quickly going to go, I believe, just listening to everybody else, it's going to go higher in fees or become a full-time position. Because the more tasks you add to him, you know, to be done in a certain period of time, I think it's going to make that position higher and higher to the.
And that's why the electrical is left out, because it's such a specific-driven job. It's its own thing and its own right, aside from a building inspector. I throw that number out to you. You can depend on qualifications. You can do it hourly. It's irrelevant to me. But we have to have a budgetary number, you know, is the fact. And 20,000 to 30,000, you throw that out there because that's your commitment. We can do hourly, I don't know, whatever bucks an hour and do it that way. But we have to have a threshold of what we're going to budget that position for, whether it be salary or hourly.
So the 20,000 to 30,000 dollars is just an estimated amount, so we can plan for budgeting reasons?
An estimate.
I guess, it's a guesstimate. And that's what you need from us?
Again, there's just so much going on or not going on in December.
Right.
December, after, you know, Amy and I were talking about this, after next Friday, December is a waste. You can't get people at state agencies, other municipalities, because people are going on vacation, Christmas, New Year's. But we need to get out the gates sometime in January, advertise for position, interview for the position, hire someone for the position sometime in March or April, when we're starting our last quarter. Usually by the last quarter, we know how we're going to end the year financially. So that's a good opportunity to do a budget revision for that position. It leaves us about three months left, three to four months left for total agenda, Rich Clemmons, as well. So it's a really good thing. But the limited time we have between now and January to take a look at the job descriptions, hash out some of these questions that we have, and then ultimately advertise for that sometime to end of January.
Mr. Holland, you had the opportunity, and you've been brought into the loop as far as the job description goes and all of that. You have it at all? All right, now here's your opportunity to throw out some of, as the engineer, the city engineer, we think highly of what any suggestions you would make, particularly during building codes and this building inspector form. I would anticipate, of course, at some point, you would be, you'd see the overall, because this will be somebody you would be working with in quite a few ways. What suggestions would you have as well that you haven't heard here that you think we should take into consideration?
You all covered a lot of it. I would just hope that we have to either clarify our ordinances or requirements, you know, that it is definitely IBC latest edition, you know, and that the person is certified in that. And like we had talked about. And like we had talked about, some people are not going to be happy with this, but I mean, you know, somebody's got to be the bad guy, but I believe it's for the benefit of everybody else, you know, property values, neighbors, safe structures, you know, to bring everything up to code. And, you know, definitely make sure that we have language in there that it includes additions and renovations, no matter how small, you know, that somebody, a contractor may tell you, oh, it's not that, you know, difficult, it'll be an easy job, but there are certifications and requirements by IBC that, IBC that you must comply to, and, you know...
Concepcionally theoretically, should it answer property value of everybody?
With this, absolutely, absolutely.
It increases the safety of your citizens at the home.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, structuralize.
It may seem like a small position, but I really believe it has its added benefits to not just that particular structure, but to everybody. And, you know, we want to make sure that it's in compliance, and, you know, if you have the electrical inspector and the building inspector, and they have an issue or a conflict that, you know, it's ironed out, as a minimum, we meet what the state does, you know, we're allowed to go higher, you know, as far as restrictions and making sure that it's up to snuff, but we've got to make sure that we at least meet the minimum state requirements.
I'll also ask that once we do, and I'm going to assume at this point that we are all onboard, that Michael has a very firm foundation as far as his job description at this point. He would take the considerations or suggestions we've given him and incorporate them, as you will, into the current job descriptions as you can. And then, if you want to, if we, we can still continue this conversation, but at this point, unless anybody else wants any other suggestions to add to the job description, I think we've given him quite a bit just in this case. You might draft up the second draft for us and...
What I'd like to do, Mary, is I would like to have Jay involved. There's a couple of things that Jay has said that I think we should include, just for clarification purposes. Give Mr. Thomas an opportunity to take a look at it as well, and maybe come back to you guys with a recommendation and a complete job description for advertising December, what, would that be the 20th, 18th, whatever, that second council meeting?
Second council.
In December, and then ultimately, we start advertising in January, which should still put us in that timeframe I mentioned.
Keep in mind that the council still would have input on anything during that time. Now, no, all right, then that would be my suggestion here. Do we have any other questions for, as far as the council goes? Do we have any more questions for Mr. Doss concerning this?
Mr. Doss didn't need an answer in the 20, 30 range right now?
No, no. In fact, we, right now, we're just trying to get a job description, as far as pay and all of that, that would come in a later date. I would ask anybody in the audience if they have any questions or concerns that they would like to add to. All right. Mr. Doss, are you comfortable with what you have on that?
I'm good. I'll certainly give a copy to Mr. Thomas and Mr. Holland.
Thank you for your work on that. I know it took a lot of research to do, so if you want to go on to the next...
The next item is B3, again skipping B1 for now. The hiring process for a city attorney. We know that our city attorney of 32 years, retiring effective June 30th, so I was charged with laying out the process and making a recommendation to council, the process to hire a city attorney. The West Virginia State Code does mention some processes in procuring for such an attorney or attorney services, and that's the guideline that I used. So, here is my recommendation to council on the hiring process for a city attorney. What I feel that we should do, and what I recommend, is that we actually advertise, we first create some type of a job description, if you will, for the city attorney, what the responsibilities, the duties, the tasks of that city attorney would be. Then we advertise for statements of qualification, which is essentially glorified resume and some documentation, so we would do an RFQ, request for qualifications. We would give a timeline to receive those requests for qualifications. Council, because this is a council appointment, would review, along with the mayor, those qualifications. We would have those attorneys who we liked come in for an interview, much like a job interview. Council would then select that attorney based off the RFQ, based off that interview, of who they would be interested in pursuing. We would then sit down with that attorney, again, we as a council and mayor, would sit down with that attorney and hash out the procurement of that attorney, how much they're going to charge, the setup, we would work with them. If we reached an impasse with that attorney, then we would go back to the next attorney involved in the negotiation process. So, again, what we would do is we would establish duties, tasks, responsibilities, the parameters for the city attorney. We would advertise an RFQ request for qualifications, give a time deadline for those individuals to submit. We would review those RFQs, select a few attorneys from that, interview those attorneys, make a determination not of who we're hiring as an attorney, who we would like to hire as an attorney, and then sit down with them to talk about compensation. Are we paying them retainage? Are we paying them straight up per hour? What are we requiring them to do above and beyond of retainage if we offer that? And again, it's what we've done with engineers, it's what we just did in the past.
It's pretty standard procedure as far as this goes with the city attorney.
And we follow West Virginia State Code as far as attorneys as well.
Any questions for Mr. Doss on that?
The city charter, Michael, I haven't read it for, I need to go back and look at it again. Is a city attorney actually required to be an employee of the city?
They're an appointed position, but I don't think they're actually truly defined as an employee of the city.
Because I think that's something that I like to get some research on, that I think there's a delineation between having a city attorney that's defined as an employee versus one that is simply pointed by the city, and the appointment is like we've done in the past, it's on an annual basis.
What I would like to do in this case, and again, we're at a deadline with Mr. McCauley as well, it's June 30th, and not to take away from Mr. Clemens, but we like to get someone in, I would assume, to know where Mr. McCauley is and where we're headed. We've got a lot of legislation, we're going to talk about some tonight. We have the home rule, they have their first home rule board meeting in Wheeling, we were not there because we don't have anything to present, which is fine, because most of these were for the sales tax supplementation, and they have a deadline to reach, so they can start collecting, I think, in July 1. But we need to start getting something in the home rule, as well as other things, police and crime police, we're talking about tonight. What I would like to do in this case is present something to you Thursday that would outline duties, tasks, responsibilities for a city attorney, give you the opportunity to take a look at that, provide input to that. I don't, kind of hard to say, but I don't know if I would use Mr. McCauley for input on that. I know my experiences with Dave, what we require to do, what Dave does for us, but again, we're looking at an attorney to replace Mr. McCauley in his retirement. I don't know how much of the, he needs to be involved in that process with due respect. But I would then give you, give you that outline for those duties, tasks, responsibilities, if everyone was okay with that, by the 20th of December, as we're doing with the building inspector, if everyone was okay with that, we would start the process after the 18th, whatever that is, 18th or 16th, or the second meeting in December, we would start the process of soliciting RFQs for attorneys.
Do you see this process being any lengthier than the building inspector process as far as the process for hiring?
I mean, it's a lot more critical position being a city attorney. I don't know, Mayor. You know, I would say we would advertise, put out RFQs. Perfect world, we would receive those sometime by the end of January, we could start reviewing those RFQs. We could review those RFQs as they come in, if we wanted to.
And now, let me, I guess what I'm getting at is, in this case, it's not as much of a transitional training with a city attorney, because whomever we would ultimately bring onboard would most likely be already familiar with a lot of the systems that a city attorney would already be familiar with.
It just depends who applies. If we have someone who's dealt with municipalities, that's great. If we have someone who's just got a law degree, maybe practices some civil law, they may not, I don't know. I just don't know. You know, putting out the RFQ and putting out fillers, you know, to be honest with you, they'll probably, they'll probably go hand in hand almost as far as the interviewing and the hiring part of it. Again, if we get into a potential where we select an attorney through the RFQs we interview, we like him or her, we start talking to him, and all of a sudden, they're asking for $100,000 a year, we don't like that, then we can revert back to the next qualified individual, we start that whole negotiation-type process again, and that, you know, that will take time. You know, it's imperative that we try to select the right individual, you know, through that, and we can always review those RFQs as they come in.
All right, let's go from the right this time.
As far as qualifications go, Michael, there really isn't a list of qualifications for a city attorney. At least, I don't think there are. I think that, you know, you've got the attorney, the qualification to be an attorney, and then you've got the code that tells you what to do.
I think outlining the expectations, you know, you need to do that, you know.
Expectations, but there aren't any real qualifications to be, it's like, you know, no qualification to be a sheriff. There's no qualification to be a city attorney, like there is to be a prosecuting attorney, but they've got to use good competence and be able to interpret and read the code, and that...
Well, one aspect of the city attorney is actually, he is the prosecuting attorney for the city of Buckin. You know, so there is a little aspect of that. You know, I just don't want to go in a room with an attorney or put something out there with an RFQ without being upfront to say, hey, these are our expectations, these are some of the things that you'll be doing. Certainly, that person has to have a doctorate, they have to pass the bar exam, they have to be a certified attorney in the state of West Virginia.
They have minimum qualifications to have.
Minimum as far as the bar goes, they're...
And again, we'll go through the process, just like we went with the building inspector.
But I can hope to maybe get something for you by Thursday, this Thursday, so you can take a look at that, and, you know, we can always have another work session, I know it's in the air. Other than that, I'd present something to you in that next council meeting in mid-December, and then we could start advertising and looking for both of those positions, building inspector and city attorney, over the holidays and into the New Year.
I just was curious if the city attorney position is a full-time, three-quarter time, half-time position?
We don't know.
Michael?
City attorney? Hmm. It depends.
Yeah.
It depends. I mean, when you had the CBD lawsuit, David probably worked more hours that year than any other year he's worked for the city.
The only thing with Mr. McCauley is we pay him a flat salary type range. You know, my experience with attorneys, you know, the hourly attorneys will sometimes nickel and dime you.
Yeah.
I've had attorneys that I'll copy on emails, previous jobs, I'll copy them on an email just to keep them in the loop. I don't want their legal opinion, their advice, they're just part of some eye reading of a letter, and they'll charge you, like, for 10 minutes at a time, you know, and that will add up. So, you know, do we want to have retainage? Do we want to have an attorney that you're going to go to these meetings, you're going to write these ordinances, anything above and beyond that criteria, you'll charge us at, you know, and that's part of the procurement negotiation process we would have with them. And some of these are just unknowns.
Because of like, anytime we have our litigation suits going on, like we do now, we're not necessarily aware of what they're doing as far as discovery and research and all of that goes, so...
Right, we don't, we don't know.
Pam, you got anything?
Well, I think in the advertisement, it should be put in there that it would be a salary position. I do not agree with an hourly position.
For an attorney?
For an attorney.
I don't think any of us do.
Well, I don't know if we do or not.
If you, well, we end up having to hire a stepdad Johnson, and we paid hourly, and it cost us plenty.
We don't want anybody to spend $350 an hour.
Well, my recollection, my recollection was, Michael, when we interviewed you, a lot of the responsibilities that you had in your previous position, which you could do here also, is that you are the, sort of the person that writes the ordinance as a city administrator, but it has to be reviewed in regard to all the codes and statutes and so forth. Am I incorrect when I make that?
There's some things I could offer, you know, and then I could not offer some home rule stuff that we're doing, when we're talking about enterprise zones and taxation, when we're talking about, you know, civil service, you know, providing a provision within civil service, and when we're talking about property tax assessments, you know, some of that stuff I would feel, I feel much more comfortable than attorney, depending what we're talking about with our fire fees, until we already have an existing ordinance, so some of that language can be extracted out and used. Some of those things where we're taking from other municipalities ordinances, copying, pasting, and doing some of that stuff, yeah, I could do that, I think anybody could do that, but, you know, I would not feel comfortable talking about anything that would be punitive, that may have to go through a civil court process, or anything dealing with taxations.
Which is primarily why we have that protection.
Yeah, I just...
How do you think home rule is going to really help us get through this process?
Get through...
This, this, he's hiring new people.
It has nothing to do with...
It won't affect us? It won't help us?
Won't help her.
The home rule's not yet.
Well, I know.
They're set on four different standards.
It's just critical, I mean, with your attorney, you know, we have to see how he or she is...
Yeah, because I saw that, and I wondered about that.
That is a key piece of this, the council and of the city, is that city attorney. The building inspector, you could go a couple months without, you might go without a city attorney.
Right, right.
So, that's a critical spoke in the city's wheel.
So, that's the process that I envision. Again, we modeled a lot of that off procurement with West Virginia State Code, how we've selected an engineer when we were doing some of our engineering services with water and sewer, also how to hire attorneys straight from code. And I think, you know, the code has been established from the state of West Virginia, it's a pretty good model, you know, it's something that I think is a fair and equitable process, and it's something I would recommend the council be doing. And again, on the meeting that we have on Thursday, I'd hope to have some type of a descriptionary duties, tasks, responsibilities, that I can present you all, we can talk about it at that meeting. You can call and email me, if we want to have a work session, we can do that, whatever it takes. But the mayor is correct, the city attorney is vital, vital, and even Mr. McCauley we have for another seven months, essentially, if you want to count December, tick-tock, that's going to go fast. So, you know, we need to get someone in, and we have a lot of legislation on it.
Council, any other questions?
Well, I just think that, you know, if we do advertise that will be a salary position, you have to have something in your mind, because I know that in a small town, you're going to get phone calls, and ex-man, whoever may say, well, I'm interested, but I'm not going to work for less than $80,000 a year. And we have to have in mind that, you know, about what we may want to pay or be able to pay, because if they're out of the ballpark, they have no reason to even have an application as far as...
Can I make this suggestion, then? Well, since we really haven't even got a draft of what the minimal requirements we're going to be seeking are yet, that as a part of perhaps that draft, that a, some research should be done on other Class III cities and their city attorneys, and maybe just a ballpark figure of between, another guesstimate, between here and here is what it averages. I believe you're right.
I just don't think we need to drag it out for months and months and months, and then we're going to stuck without the, without an attorney.
You're right. Yes, and I agree, and I think that would be a proper way to proceed there with this. Now that we've outlined the way of what we, our expectations would be for the city attorney, and by code, it's already outlined, that once Michael's come up with that draft, and then that would probably be the more appropriate time to determine, because what are we actually asking of this city attorney compared to the one we have for three years, which, you know, the expectations were always there, it fulfills no matter what, so. Is there, do you have any other questions? Those are very good, Pam, thank you very much. Mr. Thomas, what do you think, sir? Should I say anything? Yes, Mr. Thomas?
No, I just...
Go with Mr. Thomas.
Go with the process, you know, and I think, I mean, the only thing I make a comment is that when you're looking at whatever would pay this individual, there's also a real investment that we need to look at as an investment, because if you get the right kind of person, that person can save you lots of money, too.
And we want them here for the local, kind of like Mr. McCauley.
Well, I think you need to review it every...
Absolutely. All right, Mr. Doss, does that fulfill anything you'd like, does anybody in the, Jay, I'd All right, Mr. Dawson, does that fulfill anything you'd like? Does anybody in the JID ask your opinion?
I just have, you know, I just want to caution you all that this is a qualifications-based position, you know, and he must, the attorney, not he or she, must be selected on those qualifications. Yes, you all need to have a number in mind.
Yeah.
But, you know, it's, it's not appropriate to bring that in for, you know, those questions up during the interview process. It is qualifications-based only.
Thank you.
So, you know, please, you know, be aware of that and only after you select your top three choices, then you can enter negotiations. You know, and I bring that up because that's how we have to select engineers, engineering firms. You cannot base it up on price at all, you're not even allowed to ask those questions. But you, you know, we need it for an idea internally, like those cannot be asked during the interview process.
Stay prepared. That's, that's what we'll say. Anybody from the audience have any input or they'd like to go? All right, well, Mr. Dawson, do you feel like you've got everything you need to proceed with the next?
I'm, I'm good. The next, next, next item is B4, employee longevity. Our last council meeting, Mr. McCully had presented a draft, which is up for consideration first reading this Thursday, dealing with employee longevity. I don't really know where to start this. Everybody has a draft of that, so I'm assuming everybody take, I'm assuming everybody's taken a look at that. So I'll be happy to answer questions.
Then that's where we're at with this. And it was the whole point, I recall when I had a city council meeting, we're changing it up on our first readings and this is again another opportunity for council to review the drafts, take a look at them, see if there's any wording issues, or even if you want to proceed with the first reading. Now, and in this case, we cannot take it off of the agenda because the agenda's already been set. There is a first reading. The question would be at this point would be, did everybody get a chance to look at their draft? And are they, is there any concerns that you have that's going to be on the first reading?
I'll, I'll make the comment.
Yes, sir?
The, I'm not quite sure how to say this because I don't want to sound like I'm being confronted, but maybe I am. I, philosophically, I don't have a problem with the longevity recognition as part of the overall compensation package for our city employees in that it's reviewed on an annual basis as to whether or not it will come into our budget and process, our financial year end, or whatever you want to, whatever the terms you want to use. I'm, I'm a little, I guess, I want to be careful what I say here. Michael, when you started the meeting, taking the fire and police from one to four, I, I just think we have put a real rush on this one particular item. I'm not opposed to it, but I've been sitting on this council now for 10 and a half years. And there are issues that we've been talking about that I wish we had the same kind of stick-to-iveness and move those issues forward with a little bit more speed than what we had. And I guess the tone of the meeting, I think you've done a great job so far, Michael, in everything you presented. But there was a part of me that said, gosh, we're moving number one down to four and three up to one and four up to one.
Well, there's a reason for that, if you don't mind, I don't mean to interrupt.
Well, I, I understand what you're going to be talking about this Thursday in the council meeting. And it's going to be a first reading for the ordinance. But the problem I have, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Is that, you know, we've been talking about some of these other issues and we know we need to do something. It's not fair for what's been done for a long time. And I just, I have to say that, that's how I feel. You know, it just set me off in the wrong frame of mind to begin with.
I think, if you don't mind, and I, and I believe we did this for a reason because the discussion that we're fixing to have is going to be the long ones. We had a meeting today discussing this issue in Bridgeport. And we're going to fix it and bring to you the disclosure, the information that, or discussion that we had there with them. So we felt that these first three would be a shorter discussion compared to the final two, which of course you know what the final one is on the agenda under B. And I see that being a very long discussion, as you have very much discussed in the past, your, your, your concerns and your insights on that. And particularly the one we're going to discuss after longevity. So if you really want to, it wasn't as a way to change it, it was the way it was typed. But we felt that these first three, in moving the final two down, because they're going to be long discussions. And we know that the discussions on the building code, the city attorney and the longevity are not as long discussions as the next two are going to be. So that's primarily why, it wasn't any sort of a way, we're not categorizing it. Right.
Dave, I'll, yeah, I'll tell you from what we talked about at Bridgeport, there, there are a lot of decisions, actions, and some of those actions are going to bring other departments that are not city-related departments, county commissions. It's a long discussion, you know, with longevity and moving that up, that is pending legislation for first reading. But the police and fire, I wanted to clear the plate off because, you know, we're at almost, what, probably six o'clock?
Yeah.
Ready to talk about this, and I want to talk about this, but this, this fire fee, police fee, comprehensive BNO is not going to be solved Thursday. It's not going to be solved two Thursdays from now. It's going to be a task. It's going to be a larger task than I thought.
I'm sorry, Michael. We're going to need you to be able to digest what we've learned today and think about it. And we're going to be giving you a lot more paperwork on those two issues that we're fixing to dive into. Very important for the city and I want everybody to be aware here that these are discussions that we are beginning that have been put off for quite a while, as Mr. Thomas alluded to. And we're ready to tackle them. And the only reason that there's been a switch-up is I explained to Mr. Thomas is that we felt the first three, these three are the easiest ones to get out of the way because you're going to hear some things about fire and police fees and how it's implemented in other areas and a comprehensive exemption and exemptions on the BNO taxes. So just to stay on the right track though, thank you, Mr. Thomas, you're right. And I just wanted to make sure that you're aware there is no weird play going on. We're trying, actually not trying to rush it through, but it has been something that's been on the table for quite a few years as well. Is there any other questions on the longevity or comments that you would like to make?
So it'll be a first reading this Thursday.
There is a first reading, of course, we can vote no on it and put it to bed and there's no further discussion on it. What we're trying to find out is if the draft that we have now is acceptable for council to continue with or did you have any major concerns that you wanted to have changed with the ordinance as it's written?
And all, all the utility boards would be also involved in this process because we need to treat all of our employees, I mean, utility boards theoretically are separate, but they're really not.
Yes, and, yes, and actually they've been brought up in other boards. I'm not sure if we brought it up in the board that you were in because I think we have to skip the meeting before.
Yeah, we didn't have it in November.
Yeah, so all the other boards though, we have had discussions on, on the, on longevity.
So, Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor, so on the topic of the longevity.
Yes, ma'am.
We, we, you want to know if we're going to have a problem with that for the city council meeting?
No, I want to know if you have a problem with the writing of the draft as it is.
Yeah, just any questions with the.
I, I, I don't, I read the ordinance and I don't, I don't know about the other council members.
You can keep the opinions of the longevity page to yourself. What we want to know is what we're presenting to you, you've read through, you were happy with the draft of it. If you want anything changed on it before we go through that reading.
What, what does it take if, for example, two or three years from now, Michael, you decide that, we as a council decide that the amounts within the draft should, should be ratcheted up by 10 or 15 or 20, 25%? Does that take another ordinance to do that?
Yes, yes, because this ordinance has numbers and it defines, so any change in this number.
Could you just make an amendment rather than a full?
Sure, sure.
Yeah, you could, you could.
It was my.
Tier scale.
It was my suggestion to make a resolution so that you could always pull it whenever you wanted. But according to state code, it has to be in the ordinance.
Yeah, my suggestion for corrections to this ordinance would be to just completely put it back in the computer and push the erase button. Do away with it completely because I'm not in favor of it.
Well, thank you for your opinion. But as long as you don't have anything written, Mr. Pugh, for the record, would like to have it thrown back into the computer. All right, any other questions on that?
Well, that, I mean, that's a point of discussion that will be discussed further Thursday at the first reading.
Yes. Okay, so having said that, let's get on to the fun stuff. Mr. Dawson, are you prepared to discuss fire and police fees? While you do that, I'm going to get me a glass of water. I came straight from a meeting into this meeting and I really want something to drink.
Would you, would you, I want you some beer?
Oh, beer. It's a gesture, but we don't have time for that. So please continue, Mr. Dawson, I'll be right back.
Okay, we intended, we attended today, the mayor, Chief Tacy, Amy Jenkins and myself, a meeting with representatives from the city of Bridgeport. And one of the things we were wanting to talk to Bridgeport about was their, their fire fees and specifically how they approach their first due area, which is the immediate area outside of the corporate limits that their fire department provides fire protection for. Again, it's not actually in the corporate limits. There is a recent West Virginia Supreme Court decision which gave the city of Bridgeport the ability to collect fees, charge and collect fees for the city of Bridgeport in their first due area. Again, first due being outside of the general corporate limits of, of the city. So we had some good discussions with that. And I'll talk, I want to put that off for just a moment and talk to you first about a fire, fire fee specifically within the city of Buchanan. You've heard a passionate speech by Chief Tacy about his need for additional resources. And we're talking resources, we're talking additional firefighters. And he's discussed, he's discussed his concerns for fatigue and morale with his officers, with his firemen, and also some of the scenarios and situations they've been involved in that in his view directly affect the safety of our firemen. So we looked at our police and fire fees. Our, our fire fees for this discussion, as well as our police fees, have been in effect since 1983, just to give you a little bit of the history. Currently, we're using 1983 figures. Each resident of the city of Buchanan pays a dollar fifty police, a dollar fifty fire a month. So that's $3 a month for fees. That's back in 1983. As far as commercial businesses and industrial businesses were concerned, the fire fees enacted in 1983 were based off of annual gross receipts, much like our BNO tax. The annual gross receipts for a business, the amount of money that they collect and the gross that they collect and not the net. There was a cap back in 1993, again, we're still using 1983, that we're still using. And the cap on that states anything over $200,000, any business grossing over $200,000 pays a police fee of $15 and a fire fee of $15. I'm not going to throw out any revenue secrets, but we're all pretty sure Walmart earns more than $200,000 a year. But under this scenario, Walmart pays $30 a month. That's police 15, fire 15, $30 a month, $360 a year. 180 fire, 180 police for Walmart. Obviously, if Walmart caught on fire and spent more than $180 putting it out and our police are there every other day for some shoplifting or domestic call, certainly they get their 180. What this is equated to is basically, through no fault of any business or industry or commercial business in the city of Buchanan, our 1983 numbers have created a drastic difference in the residents of the city of Buchanan, really offsetting or subsidizing the collection money that we receive for commercial and industrial businesses within the city. On top of that, sororities, fraternities, dormitories, rooming houses, nursing homes, rest homes, hospitals, and this does include Wesleyan College, pay $2.40 a month fee for police and a $2.00 police cent a month for fire, plus $2 each bed, but the total monthly collected.
Cap.
Is capped at 30 bucks. Okay, $30, so each dormitory at Wesleyan, $30 capped at. That kind of gives you an idea of where we're at. This isn't a revenue grab by any stretch of the imagination, but our fire department, what we're here to talk about today, has a $650,000 budget, $650,000, and collects about $75,000 between the residents and between the commercial industrial businesses. That's not near enough to operate that department. So in order to make up for that department, we dip into other sources like our BNO revenues to collect that, you know, to, to make up that difference. And the police also get the same bite of the apple, the BNO revenue. And the street department gets the same bite of the apple, the revenue. It's not a very big apple when everybody takes a bite out of it. Police also, just for the record, are also getting $75,000 and they have almost a $900,000 budget. It costs a lot to operate a police department, that's just reality. So, you know, 75 compared to 650, or 75 compared to 900,000 isn't, isn't much. And again, these are 83 numbers, that's what we go by, that's what we have to bill. So one of the things that we were looking at, and in some of our conversations with the city of Bridgeport, was to see exactly, let's put first due aside for, first due area aside for a matter, and see exactly some of the things that other municipalities charge for their, their fees. We found out and discovered that the city of Bridgeport has a flat fee, has a flat fee that they charge their residents. Okay, and my recommendation to council was that we charge a flat fee to our residents, but we charge more than a dollar fifty, okay? Maybe we double that to $3, I don't know, that's, that's a discussion for another day, we're just getting our feet wet with this.
What's Bridgeport's?
I don't recall Bridgeport's, Bridgeport's fee.
For fire, $8.33.
Is it $8.33? $8.33 a month.
They don't have police, they don't have fire.
Okay, so, but, but one thing that I.
You said $8.33?
$8.33 a month. So I, I, I come to you just, just advocating that, that we continue to, to charge a flat fee for our residential customers, but we look at increasing that fee, certainly more than the 1983 number. Where it gets interesting is I want to get away from the gross receipts. That doesn't really make sense in, in the world, or certainly doesn't make sense when we're collecting $30 a month total for police and fire fees. What I would like to do with our commercial and our industrial is look at square footage. A lot of municipalities in the state of West Virginia, outside of the state of West Virginia, use square footage to make a determination of their police and fire fees, specifically their fire fees. Obviously, the larger, the more square footage for a building, the more resources it could potentially take for firemen to put out or, or calm that fire. So I would, I would advocate looking at some type of a formula that would base commercial and industrial on square footage.
Now, correct me if I'm not right on this, Michael. There are some cities and towns that will have a square footage computation for residential properties also, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so I mean, a person that's living in an eight or 900 square foot house right now is paying the same fire fee as somebody living in a four or five thousand.
The way that we have this structured and the way that I'm recommending, yes.
But your recommendation is that the residential will simply stay as a flat fee rather than require a square footage?
Correct, yes. And Bridgeport, who is obviously larger than us, some of the reasons that they're doing it, and no pun intended, is it's very taxing to try to get all that square footage for them. It's still a pretty daunting task to, to, to get and maintain square footage for commercial, industrial. But you can imagine going to what, 45, you know, 4,500 homes or whatever there is in the city of, in the city of Buchanan and making sure that there's square footage.
Well, I'm pretty passionate about this because I've, I've been trying to talk about this every year since I've been on the council, basically. Because I think one of the issues we have is that the, the city is subsidizing. If you want to look at it another way, because our fire and police fees are so low relative to what they ought to be based on 1983, it takes away from other projects that this city needs to do. And whether it's street maintenance or sidewalk maintenance or lighting and so forth, we need to get in the real world. And I think this is one of the most, in my mind, disgraceful things that this council, and that includes me, has allowed to continue for way too many years. And I also think that you can't simply look at the fire and police fee without saying, what impact do you have in regard to the BNO tax too? I, I look at those two together, not necessarily separately, because the change in the BNO, if you do something there, it's going to have some impact. Quite frankly, the BNO is subsidizing the fire and police departments today. I mean, that's not an incorrect statement, is it, Michael?
No, and if I may, and, and you're absolutely right, Dave. And that is the next topic up for discussion, but let's stick this one to the fire and police fee.
All right.
And then we can add, in the next section, we're going to talk about comprehensive and exemption BFO, and then, then finally, why don't we talk about how the two can be conglomerated together? Because we're actually talking about two different animals here, particularly when it comes to an idea that Michael Dawson's fixing to allude to, that our, our discussion continued with. And Mr. Dawson, if you may?
Well, let me, let me throw this out. When you, when you talk about commercial, industrial, you're saying that's going to be in a square footage basis?
That would be my recommendation.
Now, how difficult will that be, time-consuming for the city to get that information?
It will still be time-consuming for the city to do that.
That, that, I mean, that means every single business, I mean, whether it's a Wendy's or Hendrick's Jewelry, those all would be subject to square footage.
It couldn't be arbitrated for precious.
Bridgeport, Bridgeport actually, you know, so you didn't go out to every entire business. Bridgeport actually put a, a cap, if you will, or a minimum. You know, anything under 2,500 square feet, you know, would pay this rate and then you would go up from there. And the 25 would catch a lot of.
So a two-story, a two-story building would be, is something different than a one-story building?
Correct, yeah, the official square footage, you'd probably double, I guess, if it was just a square, pure square. just a square, pure square building, you'd double your square footage.
But we also, you know, if we're looking at 1983, we don't want to panic our commercial and industrial residents, thinking we're going to have to catch up immediately because we're 11 years behind, but we have to do something. You know, as Mitch said, we probably need another full-time firefighter. I mean, things are so much different.
That's what I want to build on, and I want to educate you a little bit more on that. Mitch needs more than one firefighter. Mitch would prefer to have three firefighters, so he could have two firefighters per shift. And Mitch could come in again and speak passionately about having two full-time firefighters when we go on calls. I think he had mentioned a scenario with one of our firefighters being the only one there that could essentially do the heavy lifting, so, you know, that burdens that firefighter, and it puts him in some danger. Just for your education, a firefighter, basic firefighter, somewhat green, coming out, salary benefits, throwing some overtime, is anywhere between $50,000 and $55,000 per fireman, or firefighter, sorry, not fireman. So you're looking at about $150,000 just to fulfill the request that Mitch is asking, okay? So, you know, we need to look at our residential, what we charge our residential, maybe we go with the square footage with our commercial, industrial. And then the other thing, again, and, you know, we'll bring Wesleyan College in on this, and Dave, you and I have talked about this for several years, is the approach that we take with the college. The college pays $5,400, roughly $5,400 annually, I believe.
$57.
Yeah, they, you know, and one of the options that we have there is when we look at the fire fees, looking at something with the college that maybe we charge per student that goes to that. Maybe if we charge $25 a student, that'd be $50 a year, two semesters, $50 a year. Let's say 1,400 students, that would bring in $70,000. That would cover a fireman just with Wesleyan College. And to be honest with you, Wesleyan College would probably take the student charges that we're doing per student, and would probably put that on the, you know, I'm terribly far removed from college, they'd probably just put that on their, they'd probably just put that on their tuition, to be honest with you.
That's residential students.
That's students enrolled. And I use student enrolled because if you have a student that commutes, that student is still in a building that, God forbid, could catch on fire. It's not just students that are staying or sleeping there. That student can be easily assaulted coming out of a class as any student that's on campus. So I think whether they're a commuting student, or whether they're an actual student on campus, I would rather preference to not delineate or differentiate between the two and keep them the same, because a building can catch on fire.
How about a hospital or nursing home in regard to the number of beds within that facility?
You could, you know, again, Mr. Thomas was here, you can't be arbitrary and capricious, those are things we would have to also consider, is, you know, what's the capacity of a hospital, and how many of those individuals? I mean, obviously, a hospital that has 50 beds may not have all 50 filled, so it wouldn't be fair to maybe tax them at all 50, even though some of them are occupied or not occupied. So that's another thing that we would have to look at.
And what's the cap on the hospital, for example?
Basically, police two forty a month, fire $2.40, plus $2 each bed, which would be, which would be a dollar, police a dollar for fire, not to exceed $30.
Okay, and my recollection is that the dollar fifty per month brings into the city on an annual basis about 75,000, is that, am I correct on that? That's a figure that-
Yes and no. The dollar fifty a month, okay, when you look at your budget, and we look at the lines that have police and fire fees, you'll see a budgetary item that'll say, police fee 75,000, fire fee 75,000. That's what we're saying essentially, what we're going to collect for that fiscal year. But that's not just residential, that is everything that you see, that's commercial, industrial. So if we talk about, oh gosh, we're just going to double our residential from a dollar fifty to $2, to $3 for fire, that doesn't mean we're going from 75,000 to 150,000. The logic is apples and oranges. So that will change. There is a true number, I don't have that right now, and that's easy, you just take the amount of residents that you have within the corporate limits and multiply that by a dollar fifty, that gives you a rough idea, then you multiply that by $3, that gives you the, you know, the double, if you will, idea, that'll give you a little bit more accurate. But, but no, that's not a true statement to say that the residential, it's the residential commercial makeup, that's 75,000.
So you will come to us at some point in time in the near future with a recommendation on what we need to do for the fire and police fee?
Yes.
We're not throwing the discussion out.
Yeah, I know, I know.
We're seeing our ways to go, Mr. Thomas.
Oh, I know.
Let's let somebody else get a question in, I know he's been very patient while you've asked-
Who's been patient?
My name is Ron, answer.
Mr. Pugh.
Well, he always is.
I have a couple of questions.
But we still got a long way to go.
There's your question, okay. Why could we not do the hospital at square foot and forget the beds, since they're partially empty sometimes, and would that not be a harder, more difficult way to keep track by the beds, if they're empty and the beds that are full? I think square footage would-
You could do, you could do square footage with the college, dude. You could do square footage with the college with every facility.
I like your idea, though, of the $50 per student.
Or 25, yeah, so that's-
Or whatever. Second of all, I have a little problem with the monthly flat fee for all residences, whereas my house is 1,800 square feet, and one, two streets over is 6,000 square feet. I see a discrepancy there, too, although both of us paying the same fees, when the loss of that house is going to be considerably more than the loss of mine if they both were burned down. I would recommend that a square footage limit be put on those, and anything over, say, 2,500 or 3,000 square feet be charged by the square foot instead of the flat fee.
That's a council consideration.
Consideration.
Nothing's going to all be hashed out tonight.
Yeah. Second of all, figuring out the square footage, does not the tax maps, the assessor, have the square footage of all of the residences and the buildings that are taxed?
They have most of that information that you have to go through and extract out each individual owner and-
They're not, well, sure, you'd have to each individual owner, but there should be, everything's computerized, it should be some kind of program that could reach in there and figure that out. And the other thing is, Berkeley County has just implemented fairly directly, now this is a county, not the city, Margersburg is exempted from this, but the whole county has implemented a fee based on square footage, on every residence and every business in the county. And I don't know how that's going, I have no idea, but just for information out there, Berkeley County is doing it, exempting the city in-
Now, let's keep in mind also that Harrison County does not have a fire fee. They do not, the county does, we do, which I think takes Michael to the next stage that he's going to discuss, that our discussion's at. Unless there's any questions to the point we've come so far, is everybody still with us? All right, here comes the first one.
And again, it depends on where we're at. If we're looking at three additional firemen, you know, keep the $150,000 number in your head. Now, you know, you don't want to max out all of your collections and say, okay, now we've got all these firemen or firefighters, but we have nothing to cover any operations. You know, so you want to have money there, you want to have money in reserve, you just don't want to burn through all your revenue just to meet that expectation, it's not good financial-
But I'd like to stress that we are not trying to catch up from 1983, no, no. We're just trying to implement something that will keep us going forward now.
We're trying to make something a little more equitable than 83 numbers, certainly, and given the cost of doing business in our two departments or-
So the recommendation would be part of the process, would how many actual firefighters, including the chief, would be what would consider for the future? Six rather than five?
I think, the only thing I know is Mitch would like to have three more firemen.
But he's, but he's got, I mean, he's got a replacement issue right now, too. So when he says three, one of those may be-
No, no, these are three in addition to the one that you've appropriated.
Three in addition, so you're looking at eight full-time or seven full-time?
Mitch, Mitch is the chief, so, you know, he does assist on fires, but let's take him out, there's four, there's four positions, three filled, one vacant, for firefighter, and this would add three more, so you would have seven firefighters, and Mitch would make your eight.
Is that including the county paid firming?
Yes.
What's the line item in regard to overtime for the fire department, Michael? Do you have that?
It's all part of the salary line, I have it broken out for budgetary purposes, but, you know, in the end, I put it all on the salary line, I have to get that.
That's probably a fairly substantial figure, because of what we've had to do in the last few years.
I think so.
Anyway, Michael's headed, Larry, we've got some suggestions on how perhaps they may be able to help fill that obligation.
And again, again, 150,000, and I'm getting to that point, it's all going to depend on what do we do with residential in the city of Buchanan, what do we do with commercial, industrial, what do we do with West Virginia Wesleyan College, what do we do with the hospitals? And once we get all that in place, I can start to run projected numbers to see exactly what our revenue expectation would be. At this point, I don't know if those revenues bring in an additional 150,000 to cover the three firefighters. And then again, you want to have some money there to cover your O and M, your operations and maintenance, over the next several years. The other thing is a potential option, which is, which is an interesting option, but is a very controversial option, and that's the other part of the reason we pay to visit the Bridgeport, is again, I spoke earlier about something called first due. It's the area just outside of our geographical jurisdiction corporate boundary that essentially our fire department covers on calls, okay? If you take a chart and a percentage of Upshur County, and you look at the city of Buchanan, obviously a significant portion of Upshur County's population, city of Buchanan, when you go and include the first due area, that percentage of Upshur County also gets larger. At this point, as our mayor alluded to, they are being charged $25 for residential, and is it $50, $50 for commercial?
Yes.
Outlet County, everyone outside of the city of Buchanan is charged 25 if you're a resident, $50 if you're a commercial.
Per year.
That's per year, it's called a fire fee.
That's correct, it's called a fire fee, you know, the press has covered that, folks in this room probably know about that as well, we all have heard.
Pay it.
What the county does is theoretically, they collect that money, and they disperse that between seven departments, six volunteers in the city of Buchanan also receives that. Okay, we're servicing that first due area, a pretty significant portion of Upshur County. What Bridgeport did was they were actually able to go beyond their corporate boundaries and assess their fire fee to the folks in the first due area, essentially folks in that county portion. Okay? Now, if we were able to do that, and again, Bridgeport has essentially paved the way through a Supreme Court decision in West Virginia, we could potentially charge our fire fees in the first due area and collect, if we charged a $25 flat fee, we would collect all $25, we wouldn't split that up amongst the other, you know, the other departments, and then there's some administrative fees. Okay, we would collect that. That certainly would fund and bring a pretty, pretty good shot of revenue, and I'm candidly speaking, to the city of Buchanan.
And would that be in addition to what the county fire fees are, the county gets?
No, we can't double, I don't, it wasn't Mitch that-
So we would just take that part?
We would.
Unless you're a property owner in the city and in the county, you can pay that.
Wow, okay.
Okay, now, obviously, what that does is that creates a big issue with other departments, because essentially, the revenue, we would be collecting the entire revenue in our first due area, and if you take the city of Buchanan out, you take the first due area out, that leaves the rest of Upshur County, and the rest of Upshur County to collect the 25 residential, 50 commercial, and then disperse that to the remaining volunteer fire departments. So essentially, candidly speaking, their piece of that pie would be diminished.
What does our first, go ahead, responder first due cover? How far out into the county?
There is a geographical map that is, that is designed by the US, I mean, the West Virginia State Fire Marshal.
Fire Marshal, that's it.
That sets that, the county has-
Is it set now?
It is set.
How much does it now currently?
I've not seen that map, I just found out-
We haven't pulled it out yet, because we're not sure where we're headed with that.
This is, this is probably the most controversial part of this discussion.
I can see why it's controversial.
But it's already been done, and there's precedent set.
Yeah.
And we, and without trying to bring anybody else's business into it, there could be some other issues that are already being discussed on that. So this is an opportunity for the city to take a look at, what we need to do to provide our services, and as Mike, Michael would allude to, that the city already provides these services pretty much as it is. We go out on these calls, and there's quite a few times where we don't have the assistance from the other VFTs to make those calls. Having said that, I'll take the blame, I'll make sure that everybody understands, I said that, yes, I said that. But that is something we have to discuss, and that's why we're talking about it now, because it's very controversial, but it's been done already.
Well, quite frankly, Mayor, the county has a responsibility, they have not had a change in their fire fee for years.
Yep, 2001, to be exact.
I mean, that's absolutely ridiculous. And that's one of the things that we need to sit down with the county, you know, it's supposed to be every Thursday, and we haven't done it for a long time.
You know, perhaps this will force that.
Well, you haven't even heard the real fun stuff yet, that was, and that's why we didn't bring out a map for you.
Okay, the fun stuff is, when's your papers come out? I want to disconnect my phone, that's why I want it on.
No, we have to live-
Mr. Dawson, continue on to finish up with this, and then we can go into the discussion on it.
Now, now-
Well, it's a good discussion.
With fees, the city, the city of Bridgeport, we're speaking the city of Bridgeport, actually charges a little bit more for folks living in the first due area than folks living within the corporate limits, okay? The city of Bridgeport does that, not making that recommendation, okay? I will say this, we change our in corporate limits, city of Buchanan, fire fees, I don't care if we do square footage, we do a flat fee and square footage, whatever, we make changes with an address, you know, things like Wesleyan College, I don't care if we do square footage, or if we do per student, and we do first due, you will have your three firefighters, I will say that, you will have your three firefighters, and you will have operations. But I'm telling you, a word of advice, kind of stepping out of the administrator, but from a political standpoint, it's going to be an interesting few council meetings. The only reason, the only reason that I bring that up is because we're looking at fire fees, so we need to take everything into consideration and put everything on the table, so when we do our fire fees, we can incorporate all that. Now, with that being said, if we wanted to step back from the first due area and not touch that, we can still move forward with our internal fire fees that we have for our citizens and for our businesses in the city of Buchanan. But I cannot guarantee you that we're able to provide Mitch with those resources that he requested a few council meetings ago, as much as the assurances I could give you if we did the first due. But again, you understand the dynamics, if we do go after the first due area, which Bridgeport has set that precedence, what we're going to have and how we're going to adversely impact other volunteer fire departments in Upshur County, we need to be cognizant of that.
Okay, so then, Michael, I'm trying to interrupt, I just want to make sure everybody's digesting what we're stating here. We're thinking outside the box here. Mr. Thomas, we're bringing up issues that you wanted to discuss, that you wanted to discuss for quite a few years.
That's why I'm bringing it up.
Relating it all out on the table. We even got a little bit further, a thought outside the box, to see what another municipality's doing to implement theirs and how they're fixing their things. I have been involved in, with the VFTs, Ron, I hear you, and I'll let you get to it in a minute, there are other concerns there. So what I want you to understand, and what I would hope the press and our audience would understand, that we are taking into consideration all of this, it's a discussion to find out if it's something that perhaps we can adjust to fit what we need within our city, and as Michael started off with, Mitch came to us with the plea, we're fulfilling the plea, we're taking everything that we can and throwing it together, throwing it against the wall and see what sticks. Mr. Pugh, I see some of it sticking with you, what would you like to say about some of that?
I wondered if any other municipality or governmental county has implemented a plan like this?
There, I don't know many counties, and our meeting at Bridgeport, Bridgeport did allude, did allude to the fact that there is another municipality in the state that is looking and exploring.
I think Alkins does square footage for residents.
They do.
I've got a statement for, from myself, that I feel that as a councilman, that we should do whatever is necessary to bring protection to our citizens that they deserve, and they all deserve fire protection and police protection way better than what we're giving them now. And we have to pay for it, and if a citizen wants it, they're going to have to pay for it. And I know whatever we do, if we implement this, is going to be a very unpopular decision. But I wasn't elected to make popular decisions, I was elected to do what I think is best for the constituents out there, and they will argue, but whatever is best, and I do agree that implementing this is going to have to be done, something very similar is going to have to be done, in order to give them what they need, and what, when they call 911, they expect somebody to show up.
And Mitch can go out for this, again, the first due area, as the mayor alluded to, we're covering, we're servicing those folks already, okay? We're servicing them, we're getting a seventh of what is collected, or we will be getting a seventh of what is collected. I'm not going to argue right, wrong, or whatever, but it is what it is. But you know, those are some things that as we shape and form these fire fees, we'll need to look at. And it's something that if council doesn't want to touch the first due area, I understand that, that's fine, but I'll need some direction. Certainly, we need to address what we have internally. I mean, you read the numbers, you know, you heard me say that, you know, businesses making over 200,000 pay $15 a month in fire fees. Businesses making 101,000 to 150,000 pay $12 a month. And it goes all the way down to businesses making less than 25,000 pay $2.40 a month, just a little, just 90 cents more than what our residents pay. So you know, those are things to look at, not to exceed $30 on fraternities, sororities, dormitories with bed fees, not to exceed $30 is eye opening. A $650,000 fire department budget and bringing in $75,000 as a collective whole is not good business.
We've got really two issues, I think. One is that we've kept the same fee for, what, 11 years, 10 years, something like that?
Since 83.
Since 83.
83, that's 31 years.
Okay, so 21 years. So in addition, the, should have been a restructuring of the whole process because, you know, it's not a fair process, quite frankly. And I think that, Michael, this is a great discussion. I've been passionate about it for a long time, probably to the point where you're all sick of me talking about it. But you know, we need to do something and we don't want to hurt the volunteer fire departments, so I think that's critical also.
We, you know, it's going to get out in the press. I'll coin former Mayor Kenny Davidson, let it marinate. If you're going to hear from folks, good, bad, you know, the commission, we need to have these discussions with the commission because they're going to go to the county commission. We've had some early discussions with J.C. Rafferty, we'll put J.C. on the spot in talking to him, and you know, he's just listening, he hasn't made any commitments. But there's a long road to go, but we also have to keep in mind, and I'll say this, you know, in the absence of Chief Tacy, just remember the Joey Baxas situation that he had alluded to or a few council meetings ago, and what's happening to our firefighters when they go out in the field. And it's scary when they don't have folks to back them on. I've been in fire trainings and controlled fire environments and it's scary as hell, sorry. It's scary. I can't imagine what these guys go through in real life, great appreciation for that. And for those folks to not have any backup, it's scary, you know, they get themselves in a situation. And fatigue, morale, all that settles in. And as we go through this process, we do need to keep our eye, I'm probably on my soapbox, of the firefighters and what they're going through, you know, while we go through this process.
I am the price. Pam, what did you want to say?
Actually, it's been 31 years since this.
You're right.
Okay. But also, you said, did you, did I understand you say Bridgeport does not have fire fee?
The county does not.
Harrison County does not.
Harrison County does. Oh, okay. So how do they pay for their fire?
BNO.
They have, yeah, they have, and they have part of more revenue.
They have the lower property tax.
Yeah. I have one thing to say. I live on Baxas Street and right there at the little alley next to Dorothy Short's, old home, the little house on the Lincoln Street side caught on fire last year. It was not only the Buchanan Fire Department who responded, it was three other fire departments that responded. It's never one fire department, whether it be city or whether it be county, it's all of them. They go in together and they come out together and they work together. And they deserve to be having the training, the equipment, the salaries, and the backup that they need and it's our responsibility as council people to give it to them. Or we're going to be hurting ourselves.
Another way to put this perspective also, as Pam, you said 31 years, look what the average pay was for both fire and police 31 years ago compared to today.
And that, yeah.
And we have to, we have to address that. And I think the residents, if we get things out like we're doing tonight and talk about the tough issues and be transparent, I think most people in the long run will support something that we're going to suggest that's reasonable and identify what our needs are.
Thank you for that, Dave. Mary, one last thing?
One last thing. And I also want to say that we've had a decline in the young men, and I'll say men because I know mostly, I know there's women out there that are firefighters too, but we've had a decline in this, in not just the state of West Virginia, but throughout this country of young men who are going to become firemen. Okay? They don't want to be the firemen anymore, you know? There's a decline in it. And so, you know, we also have to think about trying to hire those guys who have made high enough and scored high enough and give them a little incentive maybe to come to Upsher County, city of Buchanan later on.
Good. One quick one.
Okay.
And that is, how long has this been implemented in Bridgeport?
As far as the first due, they're just starting to send out notices and collect.
And what was the reaction of the people outside the city in the first?
They're still in the infancy stages, Ron. You know, there was obviously the Supreme Court battle.
Yeah, there was litigation.
So I think some of that is, I don't want to speak for Bridgeport, I know that they've sent out, they have about 300 on their delinquency or nonresponding list. So that's about 30%, I believe they said, of the ones they haven't collected. And you know, they take those collections to magistrate court to realize those collections. But I don't want to speak for Bridgeport, you know, as far as that, but we did get a lot of information. And again, this is not something that I'm going to be able, or Dave McCollough, we're going to be able to bang out by Thursday or two Thursdays from now. But this is good, it's going to get out in the paper, let's all talk about it. And but again, we need to look at it, we need to look at it sooner than later, I'm not putting a rush on it, but you heard the stories of Chief Tacy and you see the numbers.
I think we should push the county commission to meet with us before we do anything.
Well, we can arrange for that. And we've had a discussion, we've started the dialogue, we have other issues with the county that we would like to discuss. We always have the fifth Sundays, not the fifth Sunday, the Thursday, we could use and actually do some real work with during that time. If I would, would the council entertain about a five, 10-minute break? I'll call the meeting back to order. Thank you for sticking with us. We've had really great discussions so far. We have one more topic, topic to bring up. And I think we pretty much hashed out the fireplace. We understand, we're a digestive net, we're going to have to do more research into it, have this discussion even more, but it was a very good introduction to that. What we're going to talk about now is the B5, the comprehensive slash exemptions for BNO taxes. And again, I will give the floor to Mr. Doss to begin us on the road down that discussion.
A little bit of historical education. The city of Buchanan, through West Virginia state code, has provided the opportunity to seek a business and occupation tax for various categories and classifications. When we talk about a comprehensive BNO, we talk about the entire ability under West Virginia state code for municipality to enact a business and occupation tax for all of those categories. Buchanan does not have, in its existence right now, a comprehensive BNO. There are some categories that municipalities have the taxing authority to implement a business and occupation tax, which we do not do. One of those is amusements, the other are landlords' or rents, and the final one are professional services. Amusements are anything from carnivals to movie theaters to gaming. Rents are anything that landlords own, whether it be a residential, whether it be a commercial business. I'll talk about the Northridge development, that's owned by an entity or managed by an entity. All of the businesses in there, I'm assuming, pay some type of a rent. The landlord for those businesses in Northridge would pay the tax, the BNO tax for those businesses under the landlord business and occupation tax, again, which we don't have. The business would also pay a retail BNO as well. We don't have that. The other thing is professional services. And what I'm telling you is as part of professional services, this includes doctors, lawyers, beauticians, CPAs, anyone who provides, a professional engineers, architects, you know, the whole gamut of professional services that individuals provide, we do not tax that either. So when we talk about a comprehensive BNO, we're talking about including amusements, rents, and professional services, okay? So that's part of this equation. It's a direction of, should we have a comprehensive BNO? Is it fair for businesses, commercial and retail businesses, to pay for their gross receipts and someone who owns rentals or someone who is in professional services to not? That's a question you all will have to answer if you want to explore this further. It is, it's a question you all have to answer, you make the legislation. The other idea is we have a million dollar exemption. Every business within the city of Buchanan pays or files a BNO. I use the word file because any business that makes less than a million dollars gross, all they have to do is file a return annually, much like you file an income tax return. Any business that makes over a million dollars is taxed at the rate for their classification, whether they be a commercial retail or a wholesale business. Walmart, again, I'm not giving away any trade secrets, makes more than a million dollars a year, makes way more than a million dollars a year. But they also get that credit. So let's say Walmart made $20 million a year, which they don't, I'm not giving away a secret, let's say they made $20 million a year, they would pay gross on $19 million. They get the million dollar exemption just as much as any other business within the city of Buchanan.
You have a second tier there too, Mike.
We have a second tier for any business that makes over $2.5 million. We also have a tier system, I'll get to it in a moment. It's interesting with that because a lot of those businesses that we have do make under a million dollars, so they just file them. They just file. I know they pay property tax and you know, other things to the city, they pay their utility bills and all of that, but they don't pay a BNO, they just have to file that. So we're not collecting with that. I'm not sure, I'm going to guess the logic back in, I think, '03, '04, when this was passed, was to preserve those mom and pop businesses, you know, that make less than a million dollars, preserve Main Street, you know, have those businesses, a lot of businesses on Main Street, you know, fall below that million dollar threshold. But you know, we still have that. Is it an economic development tool? Is it an economic, does it provide an economic development incentive? I don't know if there's really any data that supports it does or doesn't. But you know, it certainly helps out small businesses, but it is a million dollar exemption. So we're looking at a comprehensive BNO, including the rents, including the amusements, including the professional services. And we're also looking at, should we, should we have a million dollar exemption? Should we have no exemption? Should we cut the million dollar exemption to a quarter million dollars or half a million dollars? So those are the things that are on the table and that's just giving you an overview of where we operate financially as it relates to BNO, business and occupation tax in the city of Buchanan.
Now, wait, now, we started to the right before with one, we started to the left before with one, we're going to start right down the middle with Mary, if she's got any questions or comments.
I just have one. As I told you, I was doing some homework on the BNO in Washington State, because they had a nice program. But anyways, my question is, if that tax sheet went right over my head, trying to tip my tongue, what? Skip me.
Well, I believe when we did that BNO years ago, we gave that million dollar exemption was to help attract businesses here.
That's the question.
And I think it really helped us get Lowe's, if I'm not mistaken.
And maybe Walmart.
Maybe Walmart suits.
Yes.
I disagree with that, I understand.
We don't know we're asking that question.
Well, you just hush right now.
I can't answer that. I wasn't here, I don't have any data that shows that one way or the other. I'm sure having a million dollar exemption or whatever exemption really helps out some of the businesses on Main Street, I'm sure, you know, hey, it's a tax credit essentially. But I don't have any data that supports or shows it helps or hurts. I mean, you know, I guess you can argue that they're not paying a BNO, you know, does that hurt that they're not paying that? But I don't know if it's attracted, I can't point myself personally, I've been there three and a half years.
I remember something about the economic development and-
Okay, let me, let's see if I can go it this way with it.
I was tired by some people.
When we were looking at, when the council was looking at the exemptions back then, and I've had the opportunity to take a look at the minutes and the discussions of those, economic development was brought. But that was at a time when, quite a few years ago, that these businesses were already going to be, and they were actually given some other incentives to be brought into or to Buchanan, not that they wouldn't have in the first place, because of course, the market was already ripened for them. Having said that though, at this time, dating age, and the exemption makes total sense at that time, because of course, you don't want to do anything to your mom and pops, you don't really want to do your small stores. But you've got to ask yourself this question, at 250,000, are you really affecting the, again, the small business owners? Do they fall within that area? That's why at a point where the comprehensive BNO would actually be, you could go with an exemption of, this is just hypothetical, with a 250 for an exemption, but do the comprehensive BNO, does that, if you think to yourself, does that include, and within the professional services, a lot of your small stores as well? And you could probably answer yourself, no, it's going to affect the larger conglomerated businesses. So having said that, there were other incentives that actually brought Walmart and Lowe's and big corporate giants like that here. It wasn't necessarily the exemption, it does help, but they might argue, it's not fair to them. You know, what about all the other smaller stores? How come they end up having to pay this giant amount?
But do you want, the people essentially are the ones who keep those big businesses going. They're spending their money there.
Yes. And that's why they're not mom and pop stores.
Can I say something?
Actually, we can go that way, sure.
Well, again, you're probably all tired of me hearing this, but you know, we talk about arbitrary and capriciousness. This is one of the most arbitrary and capricious things we do in this city, period. And to not have everybody be involved in the comprehensive BNO tax where we exclude three segments is absolutely arbitrary and capricious. It's been that way for years. It should not be done. And I do think there are some ways, first of all, we ought to have comprehensive, I think. And Michael, there are different rates that we charge based on a million to 2.5 and then beyond 2.5. You know, one thing you could think about, and I don't think this is unreasonable, I may get a lot of phone calls and my number's 472-7007, so call me anytime, but you know, eliminate the one million dollar exemption, but also recognize that you want to be able to have the small business here. You can gear your rate from zero to a million, you know, maybe 50 bucks for every $200,000. You know, shouldn't every business, commercial enterprise that's within the corporate limits contribute something to what we're doing here as a city? And to be able to do more on the streets, on the sidewalks, on the lighting, you know, we take a look, we have a great little town, we don't want to give the impression we're going to just raise fees all across the board, but at the same time, we need to be realistic and keep the quality of life continuing. I think it's arbitrary and capricious what we're doing now, I've said that for years, I don't understand why we simply say, well, you know, you don't have a pizza place, so you're a professional service, we're not even going to bother with you. I think that's wrong. And shouldn't everybody contribute a little? I think this is a great discussion, I appreciate the time to let me be an old curmudgeon or cranky, whatever you want to call it. But you know, we got to, we really do have to think outside the box and have a, I read an editorial about two months ago, I believe in two principles, a level playing field and transparency. And I think we need to continue to be focused on that, that's my opinion.
Well said, David, thank you very much for your, it's part of the discussion you've been wanting to have and that's part of the reason why I brought it up.
Thank you.
It's not time to do that. Mr. Pugh, where are your comments on this, sir?
I believe that we have no other municipality with which to compare any of our data on the exemptions, because aren't we the only one that has a million dollar exemption?
I think Weirton has an exemption of some kind, I don't know if it's a million.
But it's not a million dollars.
We are the only ones aside from them-
No, we are the only ones, aside from them, that have any type of exemption.
Yeah, and I'm like David, I really feel like that everything so far has been arbitrary and capricious. And I don't, if I had a business, I would expect to pay something, not maybe as near as much as Walmart, but I agree with a small fee, depending on the 200,000, 300,000, whatever like that. I don't think any business owner would actually, well, I know they would complain, I don't think they should complain about it, though, because they are a business, they're performing something in Buchanan, and for a little bit of nothing, really. Now, if we start making them take care of their streets and their sidewalks, they are going to complain, right?
I have an opportunity in my position to see all of the BNO that's filed or has paid to the city of Buchanan, and I will throw this out there, if you look, if people like the exemption, if you took the exemption down to half a million, or honestly even a quarter of a million dollars, I feel that those businesses that was the intent of council a decade ago, a little less than a decade, a little more than a decade ago, would still be preserved. Because I see the gross that's been reported, if you dropped it down to 250,000, I'm not advocating that, I'm just saying, those smaller businesses still are not going to be impacted by that. A million, is it too high? That's for you all to make that determination, but a lot of those businesses do fall less than a quarter of a million dollars in gross. So they would still be protected.
They're charging 50 bucks.
So Michael, what would be our next step? Let's just say, okay, we're on board now, we want to go with a comprehensive BNO, this is just hypothetical, or we wanted to go with the exemption. What would be the council's next step to do that? Would that require a new ordinance? Would that require two readings?
You'd have to amend and revise the existing ordinance dealing. I guess in this case, we'd be talking about wholesale and retail BNO. You also do want to keep in mind, there are other exemptions. About, what, two years ago, Dave, we did the contractors' BNO, and we had a $50,000 annual exemption there. I think the financial BNO has like a $10 exemption, it's something crazy. I had one person who files a financial BNO, say you can keep your $10. I don't know why we have a $10 exemption.
My other question would be, do we have any state requirements that we have to fulfill as far as these taxes go? Because let's say, for instance, I'll give you the example that today there was a huge meeting on the Home Rule boards for the sales tax implementation in town. And I would say that we have not even considered a sales tax yet. But this is an outside of the box way of going about what we could do, as opposed to implementing a sales tax. Then there are rules and regulations within that whole realm that we would have to follow to make that happen. But my question would be, what would this city entertain as far as Michael Doss is concerned in continuing? First of all, do we want to continue this discussion, and do we want to take a look at perhaps in writing, something on what the options would be for you to consider? And then at another meeting, we would bring it up within the agenda on the discussion of what all of those options would be, and which ones perhaps we would want to proceed with to narrow it down. Is that something that this council would want to do, or how do we want to proceed?
I think it's mandatory that we do that.
Yeah, I think it's a good process that we've opened us up with this kind of discussion this evening. And I've made a couple of suggestions a couple of years ago, that we're elected officials and it's a revolving door sometimes. You know, I think there are ways to reach out to the business community, to maybe have an ad hoc task force to take a look at some of these things and get their observations or comments or suggestions. You know, how much does a million dollar exemption really encourage businesses to come in? I don't think it does, as far as a large box like Walmart or Lowe's, they look at what their total revenues are going to be, not, oh gosh, we've got a million dollar exemption down at Buchanan, let's move down it. I don't think that's part of the process. But there are a lot of people with different opinions, and that's why we're talking about this tonight. And it's a process I really feel good about, but can we get more people involved? Maybe we've done it by doing our reading.
I want to say something, Ron. We can't just charge a business a flat rate. The code prescribes there's a certain percentage or a certain formula you can do for wholesale, certain formula or percentage you can do for retail. We can do anything less than that. Like with our contractors' BNO, we don't have to do the full 2% like we did, we could have done 1%, but we can't delineate away from that formula. We can reduce that formula, but we can't just say, okay, anyone falling less than this, you should give us 100 bucks.
What are we charging between a million to two and a half and then over two and a half? What are the rates? Is it a quarter?
It's .005%, I think over, I think it's over, no, it's .005% under and .0025 over.
So for a million, if you have a million dollar business, theoretically, you could pay as much as $2,500, is that correct?
I'll say this, there are a lot of businesses that fall under the million dollar exemption. A lot of those mom and pop businesses, again, as I alluded, do fall under that quarter of a million dollar exemption, which means they make less than that. And then there's that kind of catch-all, and most of those businesses, and again, I'm not giving anything away, it's pretty darn obvious, the Lowe's, the Walmarts, which make more than a few million dollars a year, go into that second tier. But for the most part, most everybody else that goes past that million dollars stays somewhere between the 1 to 2.5 million, stays within that first initial tier you get. Everyone else has to make over 2.5 million in addition to the million dollar exemption. You see what I'm saying? So it's actually 3.5 million dollars. And there's not many businesses in the city of Buchanan, unfortunately, because we would have businesses making more money than that, that make over that amount. And you could probably name the ones that make over 3.5 million.
You can't, you cannot charge a flat fee for 200,000, you have to do a percentage.
You have to follow a formula. You can tier that formula if you want to, but you have to follow that certain percentage based off of those categories within West Virginia code. You can't charge a fee, that ends up becoming some type of user fee or impact fee, totally different animal than what we're dealing with, what's prescribed in the state of West Virginia in code for BNO.
Pam, let me, Pam's going.
I ask you, how are you keeping track of the people that's in the BNO and have any problems with collecting BNO?
We don't have a problem. Okay. With our contractors' BNO, we have sent out nasty grams to some contractors, usually they're contractors that come in, they're from out of state. For the most part, our folks, our businesses in town file a BNO. Sometimes we have to get on them about it, but they have to file. And a lot of them go under a million dollars, and a lot of them take the feeling that I'm nowhere near a million dollars, so I don't owe anything, so I'm not going to send anything to Buchanan. And those are the ones we have to go after, and we spend time, and really, it's kind of taxing because we're not going to get anything out of it. We know they're not making over a million dollars, they know it, but we still need to have that filed. And it's important because everyone needs to file. You need to file income tax. It comes into importance when we're looking at a comprehensive BNO, or we're looking at changing our exemption, because I can take their gross and know what they're getting in, and say it makes under, say it makes a hundred thousand dollar business a year, and we take our exemption or credit down to zero. Now their filing becomes important to me, because now I know I'm going to get a hundred thousand dollars of taxable gross revenue at a BNO rate. So sometimes it's actually paying, our wholesale retailers pay pretty much on time. If not, they're usually a month behind if they pay monthly, but we get it in. The ones we have problems with are the nonfilers, and simply because they're like, I don't make a million dollars, so what's the point? They still need to file, and I'll tell the press that, the public, your business, you still need to file in the city of Buchanan, whether you're past that exemption or not, obviously if you're under that exemption, you need to file. But for the most part, it's the nonfilers that really wouldn't owe anything that we end up sending a letter to, or maybe sometimes a second notice, and we get compliance.
Is it correct that only the treasurer and the city attorney can have access to that information?
There's an issue also of the mayor, I've heard that the mayor also, but if anything, it's the treasurer, the mayor, and the city attorney.
And the mayor's not really concerned with it. Mary, go ahead.
Michael, so we wouldn't have to worry about too many professional services here in the city even being affected by the BNO tax?
Professional services are not taxed at this point. This is aside from a million dollar exemption. If you decide that you want to tax professional services, that'll be a whole new ordinance. We'll take a look at what West Virginia code allows you to, the max you allow to charge them, and you can charge in the max, you can have an exemption, you can charge less than what is prescribed that you're allowed to max out, and then we would start collecting with them. I don't know, because we've never touched professional services. I don't, you know, I'm sure there's some doctors and some lawyers and CPAs that make pretty good money in Buchanan, but I have no access. And if we were to implement, I'll tell you this, if we were to implement a professional services BNO, or we were to implement a comprehensive BNO, for my first budgetary year, I would be highly conservative, because I don't know what I'm going to get. Obviously, we'll get some, but we wouldn't realize those numbers until actually we had at least one full year of trend. And obviously, you'd like to have two or three years before you step out and do that. You'll notice when we do our budgeting for BNO for contractors, I put $1,000 in there. I know we're going to get $1,000 in contractors' BNO that year, but I don't know. Contractors may, projects may be built that we didn't know about at the beginning of the fiscal year, that may be built six months in. So I don't know that number, I don't know what we would collect, an expectation of that. I could throw a number, but it'd be like blindfolded throwing something against the wall.
College universities and hospitals are exempt, is that correct?
Yes, nonprofits.
What about nursing homes?
Religious institutions.
Depends on the, it's classification.
Does this, is each firm or each business assess this, or in the case of, say, a law firm, are each member of the firm assessed a BNO tax, or is it on a collective?
Corporate.
On the corporate. So if a certain attorney makes, I think it could be a doctor, too, makes three and a half million dollars a year, then that would come through the firm and not the individual?
My understanding, yeah, I mean...
All right. Counsel, if you don't mind me then, how about this? For transparency's sake, as I keep hearing, and that's something I really do applaud, what if we were to schedule a public hearing concerning these last two issues? Fire fee and the comprehensive BNO, the police fire fee and the comprehensive, the BNO tax, however you want to look at it, comprehensive or exemptive? What if you'd want to do that? I would not suggest we do this during the holiday season. If you would be interested, then why don't we take whatever information Mr. Doss can get us, and you, as council members, and as business owners, as that may be, take a look at what other states are doing, what other comprehensive things are, what other police and fire fees. Any questions you may have, you can always address to Mr. Doss or to anyone that you feel would be of a good advisor. Why don't we take a look in our schedules and see if he would like to do a public hearing regarding these two before we even proceed any further? I like David's idea that we, I have every reason to believe we are going to be hearing about it anyway within the next month, and if you would like, say the middle of January, we bring it up into a public hearing, open it up for all the citizens of Buchanan to do. Now, is there a concern with that, Mr. Collin, or Mr. Doss, or Ambie? Would there be a concern with...
You do mean public meeting, right?
Yes. A town hall meeting.
A town hall meeting.
Not a hearing on an official, just a hall meeting.
I'll say with the comprehensive BNO, the only thing that I can give you is the state maximum that you can charge. I'm not even going to begin to run a projection of what lawyers are making or doctors are making. And as far as the exemptions, I can run you some projections, because I have those numbers of, okay, if we took it down to half a million, if we took it down to quarter million, if we took it down to nothing, I can get you better numbers there, because I have those numbers, and I have years and years of that data through filing. But the comprehensive BNO, we'd kind of be on our own, I can educate you on state code with it, and Mr. McCollough can, but I can't give you numbers.
What I think we're more looking for is as citizens come to us and discuss with us what a comprehensive BNO is, what those three categories are, what the exemptions are, what we do now. What we receive now. We need to be able to actually have a logical, smart discussion with whomever comes and approaches us with those issues, and that's what I'm suggesting at this point, before we even have a public meeting or a town hall meeting. Mr. Collin, did you have any concerns with any of that? What did you think?
No.
I'll open it up also to anyone within our audience. Is there any questions, anything that you would like to comment on there? Mr. Doss, if you have anything else that you would like to bring up? Do you think you addressed everything you wanted within your agenda?
I'll just review. For the fourth, well, actually for the 20th, or the 18th, or what, 16th, whatever that second meeting is in December, I'll have the finalized building and code enforcement for your approval, so we can start to advertise that. The hiring process for the city attorney, I'll have kind of a duties, tasks, responsibilities set for you to look at as a draft for this Thursday's council meeting. Employee longevity, that's up for first reading on Thursday. The police and fire fees, we'll be setting up a town meeting or public meeting or something at some point after the holidays, as well as the comprehensive BNO.
Yes, sir. I believe that's... Let's start with comments. Mr. Pugh, we'll start with my right.
I like the work meetings, I think it's very refreshing. I would suggest when we have our town meetings, that we perhaps go to the conference center. I don't think we've got enough room here.
That's a very good suggestion, we can go soon, we can go on that. Anything else?
No, that's all. Thank you, sir. Mr. Thomas?
Yeah, I think these are very helpful discussions, and I think we should plan to have them at least quarterly, maybe every two months, because there's a lot of businesses that we still need to deal with. You know, one thing I just throw out, we don't have to talk about it tonight, but we had a discussion about the board committees and the compensation, and whether you're in attendance or not attendance, if you get paid. I think that's something we still have to deal with, and we take a look at the model that the school board has. But these are very helpful, and I appreciate the time and your patience with me. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Mrs. Bar?
I want to add to that, that I still think that we need to look at if you have two people, one, they both have insurance, that one doesn't necessarily have to have it taken out of their pay. Like, say for instance, we have a fireman, and their wife's insurance uncovered them, that nothing should be taken out of their pay, do you understand what I'm saying? They can all go in that way.
They can elect.
Elect, yes.
Oh, I see where you're at, okay.
I have a nephew who works for Mon Power, and they are going more in that direction.
We are definitely, in one way, going to have to look at our insurance benefit packages.
There is something on the insurance, it's got a great test name, it's called a spouse will carve out. That's what it's called in the insurance business. And essentially, it's what you're saying, Pam, is that if your spouse has insurance for another provider.
Right, right.
We could essentially say, hey, go on your spouse's insurance, and they're covered. Obamacare's changed that a little bit, because they can go with the choice of who has the better coverage, whatever, good, bad, that's wacky. But, you know, so that's something that we haven't explored, but is out there, and we're not sending someone away with no insurance, they're obviously being provided through their spouse, but, you know, some people elect to not take their insurance through their employer and actually take the city's insurance and be on that, when they have insurance available to them, because we pay 100%, and they may have to pay a few hundred bucks a check or whatever, so.
Maybe four hundred a month.
One other thing, how long has it been since the rates have been changed for business licenses in the city?
Those were set by code, too.
Those were set by code, too. That's something else that's been on the list for a long time.
I'll tell you one thing, really, I don't want to say the word, okay. I pay $25 state business license, your lawyers in town pay five bucks.
If you segment it, so.
Absolutely.
Is that something we can address? We can, you said there's a formula.
It's all about arbitrary and capricious. It would be an interesting thing to maybe challenge with Home Rule, you know, seeing you could get around that.
Well, ma'am, you bring up a really good point, is that a battle?
Well, I guess, you talk about being fair.
She just, that's three for Pam tonight, one more, Pam, and you get a home run. My turn?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I just want to say something in reference to the employee longevity program or plan or whatever. It's not a Christmas bonus, because that's a violation of state code. What it is, is an incentive or recognition plan based on our employees of the city. What it is, is a little something that will not be given if funds are low. We can't afford it, it's not given. What it is, is a simple thank you to a group of people who deserve a pat on the back and a few coins maybe once in a while to... a few coins maybe once in a while to jingle in their pockets because they're gonna have to suffer from something they've never had to deal with coming up, and that's increase in employment, or not employment, healthcare plans probably. I think that that would help them a lot. We're lucky to have the professionals that we have working for the city of Buchanan. You got three of our finest sitting right here in this room with us tonight, and I think that we need to give them a little recognition and some incentive ever now and then, or some of these finer employees may be looking for another place to go. We're a city that's got better benefits and higher salaries, and I gotta say this, I'd hate to lose them. Now, shut up.
Thank you, Mary. I would echo your comments there with our employees, and I, as a working class man, could appreciate anything that my employer would show to me that's an appreciation for the work that I do, particularly if I do it for three years or longer. I think that's only fair we do back. I understand some people's concerns with it, that's fine and dandy, that's your opinion, and you're welcome to it. My opinion is, though, that it's one of our main jobs as the council, and mine in particular is what's known as the CEO of the company, to help protect our employees and to show them the consideration that they deserve, even if they do a bad job, it would be ultimately I get to fire them. So, I would leave that to Mr. Doss because that's part of his job description, but ultimately it's on me. And what else I do wanna say is I wanna thank everybody for being out here for a couple hours, listening to us discuss these issues, they're important issues, they're something that I'm glad that we could throw out on the table. I, being in a pretty limited term, why not take the chance and let's do it? I like the idea of having ourselves a town hall meeting and hearing everything that anybody has to say, so I would encourage all citizens to, once we set that, to go ahead and please attend. If you have any concerns at this point, please put them in writing and address them to your council member that you would prefer to have them addressed to, or your mayor as well at City Hall. Again, thank you for coming out tonight. All our comments are over for now, but we will stand adjourned. Thank you very much, folks.